Welcome everyone to the March 12th session of the Norton Planning Board. We are again at the Norton Middle School anticipating an audience that would not be capable of being accommodated at Town Hall nor at the, I believe the media center was taken. So here we are at the Norton Middle School. I'm the agenda board tonight other than internal business. We have a, an application for site plan at 4 Olympia Street for Sweet Stuff Bake Shop. At 7:50 we have a continuance of Fairland Farm Solar Next Energy. And then at 9 o'clock, and I am going to stick to this agenda, we will end at 9 o'clock in Fairland. At 9 o'clock we have a special permit continuance for Bus Star Business Park, the initial special permit 479, and also special permit 481 which is for the main building number seven. Do we have, we have some minutes to approve. I don't know if folks have had a chance to look at those. And if so, if there are any additions, corrections, I believe they are... February 28th and March 5th. It looks like both, everyone's here, has, had folks had an opportunity to review those minutes and if so, it's our duty.
I do not believe that's sufficient time to go through them.
Is your budget a table at least to the end of tonight, if not to the next meeting? We'll let, table it for the moment. Any bills to be paid?
No.
There are no bills to be paid, so why don't we just get right to the first item, 4 Olympia Street, Sweet Stuff Bake Shop.
What we have before you... What we have... What we have...
We don't have...
All right. Dan Campbell, Level Design Group on behalf of the applicant, Sweet Stuff Bake Shop, Brad and Melanie Barrett. What we have is a approximately 25,000 square foot property, almost right across the street from where we're sitting today. Brad and Melanie are proposing a 2,500 square foot footprint bake shop and cafe. Essentially, it's a small bakery, small cafe in the front, and we have a parking lot which surrounds the property. The plans which were handed out to you tonight were done today based upon comments from last Friday. There are not substantive changes in the plans. We received comments from both Conservation and the Planning Office. And the Planning Office comments were from our staff and department head meeting approximately a week and a half ago. The plan changes that you'll see on the plan are only bollards adjacent to our patio area that we have. So if I can walk you through the plan, what we have Olympia Street outside is a one-way street, comes around and comes back towards South Main. In this area, we have a one-way driveway around the property in this direction. Handicap spots in the front, parking on the side, rear. Main building inside a landscaped area at essentially a central island within the property. To the north side of the site is what used to be the bank and Home Plate Restaurant is behind us, and directly behind us is the septic system for Home Plate. To our south is a single-family house on Olympia Street. The house, the bake shop essentially is designed as a single-family house itself. So what we have, just so you can see, because those aren't in your package, is essentially a, a single-family house, according to it, because it is in that type of neighborhood. Drainage from the site. Drainage from the site separated in two different directions because the existing drainage goes in two different directions. Partially it goes to Olympia Street, partially it goes to the rear, again towards Home Plate. The drainage in the front, essentially we're picking up the entire building, part of the grass area, and we're putting in a subsurface infiltration basin at the front. And then at the rear of the site, we have one single treatment catch basin, double catch basin, which goes to a subsurface basin with an overflow at the rear of the property. Again, it's a fairly small property. We have approximately 11,500 square feet of pavement, so the treatment areas are also fairly small, considering the size of the building and the size of the site. The changes on the plans based upon the comments, there were more written changes in the O&amp;M plan, changing the wording from erosion to sediment. Apparently Conservation likes the word sediment better in their, their plan, so we did make those changes. They wanted some detailed changes, such as instead of the stake going through the center of the filter truck sock, they wanted it behind the filter truck sock. So we made those changes. But the physical plan itself, we added bollards to the outside of the building on the patio side. That is the only change to the, the physical plan. That is, that is the site. Those are basically the changes that we made and handed in, and those plans are looking out today.
Again, we're dealing with one mic, so let me turn it back on.
Is there any intention or was there discussion about hooking the parking lot up with the Home Plate parking lot?
They're both individual property owners, and our property directly abuts their septic system towards the rear where it would be more conducive. Their property, the bank property, is about approximately four and a half feet lower than this property itself. So it would actually be a very difficult connection even if they, they did have an agreement. But again, they're, they're separate property owners.
Your plan shows parcel one, parcel two, but those are not joined as one? Do you think you can join as parcel?
So that the parcels themselves are joined, but they, and they're sold as one, but the deed does still call them out as, as parcel one and parcel two inside of the overall parcel that they're sold as.
A question on the flow of traffic. It seems to be going clockwise, which is really unlike most similar-sized buildings, restaurants, that go in a more, you know, in first and then out on the backside. So what's the reasoning for that? And if you could share that, please?
Absolutely. So Olympia Street, their flow is one-way, this direction. So if we have our flow coming counterclockwise, then you have the queuing at Olympia Street coming back past the queuing, potential queuing at the driveway. Whereas if you take the flow from the driveway, if we enter here and we exit here, we exit behind any snacked cars on Olympia Street, thereby entering the traffic on Olympia Street rather than changing the traffic patterns in any way.
How far back is the entrance drive from the intersection?
We're approximately 160, 170 feet.
Okay. I'm just gonna add, there's, I'm not familiar with traffic backups at this.
There's, there's certainly not a ton, but it's, it's first thing in the morning, last thing at night, and if you've got people coming in for cafe-style items, bakery items first thing in the morning, you want people to be able to pull out and, and enter to take the, the left or the right back onto 123.
Right. And the only concern I guess would be if traffic does queue up there now, you're blocking people trying to actually turn into the, into the business, so.
I understand.
Okay.
Dan, show a portable well site in the back corner, which I'd also mentioned, the septic system for Home Plate is on that side of their property. What's the distance between the two?
So the, the one comment we have not addressed in these plans that I did talk to Paul about today is we're working with the Board of Health on the location of the septic system and the location of the well. The Board of Health did ask us to take the well and move it to the front corner and thereby change around our septic system a little bit to make both of them work together. So if the Board saw fit for any kind of movement on this project tonight, we would ask that to be a condition that we, we follow the Board of Health. Now, part of the reason for that is we're also working with the Sewer Department at the same time. Their sewer project coming through this portion of town, they're trying to determine whether or not a stub will be left on the street for future connections, which this project could then connect to the sewer, making the septic system null and void, and then we could place the well where we need it to on the property and not worry about the septic system.
I suppose with the same consideration, I, I trust as water, West Main Street, considerations for hooking up to water?
So if you look at the site plan, C3, we do have portable water from the town source as a backup supply, but because it's a bakery and the well or the water situation currently in Norton, we do plan on having the well as our primary water source based upon the current water situation.
Other question from coordinators. Anyone in the audience have questions or comments? My assumption is that people feel this is straightforward and therefore, no additional questions?
Any questions?
Oh, sorry.
Where's the dumpster going?
I can answer that. So we have the dumpster in the back left-hand corner adjacent to Home Plate. This location here.
And the other corner?
Correct.
Okay. The...
I'm sorry, sir, could you just identify yourself and address?
I'm Mark Hario. I live in the house behind where this is going.
On Olympia Street.
On the Olympic Street. I'm curious on the, coming in on the cafe, it's gonna come off, do you come off from one way?
Correct.
Okay, it's a one-way street?
Yes.
So you're gonna have, people gonna have to come all the way around and come in and they come out?
Correct.
Okay. That's a very busy area one morning, that night, and some people might not know which one went. Are there gonna be signage up and let them know? Because we have people that come down now anyways, so that's a concern.
I mean, I guess if it becomes more of a concern than it is today, we'll work with the, the police. I, I do know the signage that's there with the do not enter signs. Unfortunately, we can't enforce the traffic laws of, of the town, but we can help with, you know, identifying through the police if, if our customers are breaking them on a constant basis. So that's the best, I think we can do from that standpoint.
Just a further comment. On all of those lines, is there a planned right-turn-only signage at the exit as well? Has that been determined yet?
There, there is a one-way sign fairly close to there, but I can certainly place a right-turn-only sign at yes.
To the right of this plan is a residential house, go back to the left?
That's the former bank in front of Home Plate.
Okay. What about hours of operations and lights? Where are you having the outside lights and outdoor seating?
So the outdoor seating is underneath the existing, or underneath the proposed farmer's porch in front. Otherwise, it's, it's essentially residential lighting. We don't have any lighting for the parking lot per se. The lighting is going to be basic lighting off of the building. The lighting off of the building, one of the reasons we did not put any parking on this side was so that we didn't have to light a parking lot on that side of the building, and we could keep it residential in nature.
You also have a patio on the right-hand side of the building as well?
Underneath the pergola, correct. So it'll, again, it'll be residential lighting underneath a pergola, similar to what you would have at, at any other, essentially it's, it's a comfort area outside. That's lattice work with, with seating or a patio underneath.
Dan, any proposed hours of operation?
10 to 6, Tuesday through Saturday.
10 to 6, Tuesday through Saturday.
I don't know if it would be germane for hours 10 to 6, but there's no, at least there's not shown any fencing on the right side of the property, and since traffic is going to be driving in that direction, obviously headlights, if you were open at night, you know, it does get dark in, you know, December, it's not before 6:00. I think it would be a proof of consideration that if hours were extended beyond 6:00 PM, that could be a requirement, that fencing of some sort to block traffic lights on that right-hand side.
The applicant's amenable to that.
Any other questions, comments? Well, we have the application, this recital plan requires a majority vote. Is there any other discussion? None? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for site plan for bakery.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Let's remain silent. Thank you, everyone. Good work. Our next on the agenda, we're a few minutes early, but perhaps we can start with the applicant getting ready. Are they here? Folks are running a little ahead of schedule. Whether you wanted to set up and perhaps touch on some of the things that you wanted to present, we may have to have it repeated as other folks come in, but I want to take advantage of the time while we have it.
Thank you.
Would you like the boards set up?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Would you like the board set up on the stage or where I had them before?
You know, you probably want to stay there, only because now we're having microphone issues, and that's the only mic, so as audience members come up, you can both share that mic, if you please.
Good evening. Are you all ready for us?
Hey, want to check that whether it's on?
Okay. Working.
You know what? Only because, I don't want to run into any legal issues, only because it's 10 minutes early, let's switch this around for a little bit, and allow folks to ask questions for the first 10 minutes, because they're not on the agenda, you are. So we'll, as I think of it, we'll start with any questions that people may have, and I'll just have questions asked, and then at 7:50 if you could start answering them. That way we're not running into any issues with agenda. I'm gonna use the same ground rules that we used last time around, and that is people can line up at the mic, you have three minutes, and as I announced before, perhaps some of you came in, this is on the agenda from 7:50 to 9:00 PM. I'm going to stop at 9:00 PM because we have two other special permits to begin at 9:00. So again, if you, particularly if you have already asked or made your point previously, I'd ask you out of courtesy of your neighbors to allow others to speak, but I'm gonna recognize whoever's in the mic. So again, we'll start with anyone who may in the audience have questions or comments, and then I'll ask the applicant to kind of keep note of that, and then we'll catch up a bit with the answers to those questions at 7:50. Yours?
He's got some key pictures. These are the... Picture I sent over today.
You may want to adjust that mic for those that are not very well trained.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I sort of start and then?
No.
Okay. Again, just for the record, Matthew Gaines from the law firm of Marcus or Rico, and Martin Brooks, attorney for about 40 of the butters, 20 homes. I just want to start with a quick procedural question actually for Board or Planning Director. Since the town meeting in January where the bylaw amendment was approved, has the town published or posted a copy of the bylaw amendment as required by Chapter 40, Section 32? If you don't know, maybe, but I just wanted if you do know.
I don't know if it's been posted, and I may stand corrected, but I believe it gets posted after it's been approved by the Attorney General.
Okay. That's, I know that's usually the procedure, I just went through this in another town, and that's when they posted it, so I was curious if you had. So that's an important point to make actually in terms of procedural, and I'm glad we got that clarified. So at the February 5th meeting, I raised the question whether the Planning Board could approve an application. I mean, the new zoning bylaw before the Attorney General approved the amendment, the applicant's attorney submitted a letter and correctly stated that the effective date of the amendment is the day on which it was voted on at town meeting. So that's the effective date. However, the language of the attorney's letter did omit the relevant language in Chapter 40, Section 2, that requires the publication or posting of the amendment after it is passed in order for the amendment to take effect. It's a little confusing, kind of chicken or the egg thing, but the law is clear that no bylaw shall be effective until it is posted or published, and once that is done, it is effective as of the town meeting. So the posting of it puts it into effect, and then it is effective as of the town meeting. Given that you have not posted or published it yet, it is not in effect, therefore it is not effective, and I don't see how you could approve or, or deny for that matter, an application under the zoning bylaw until that procedural step has taken place. So I don't know when you plan on publishing it, maybe you're gonna wait for the Attorney General, maybe you're not. I'm not sure if that's a requirement or not, but you can't procedurally approve it obviously because it's not in effect now. You can eventually, and it's fine that they applied before that because it is retroactive to January, but I just want to make that clear that you can't approve it until it's actually been posted or published. With that said, kind of moving on to a few other topics, just to kind of quickly again on the bylaw amendment, I know we've kind of beat this to death, but you've really been misled from the beginning on this. As far back as the hearing on the bylaw amendment itself in December, the applicant repeatedly said that the bylaw amendment applies to other locations in town. In his recent letter that was submitted at the last meeting, he mentioned two other locations, one that was owned by the town and another one that is on Totten Ave. I looked in, looked into them a little further since the last meeting. The, those locations may meet the state guidelines, but they don't meet the zoning bylaw, which is more restrictive in that the zoning bylaws uses the word "active bogs." We all know, I don't think anyone would argue, that the town-owned bogs are not active. They look quite dried out, and I think have been for a number of years. As for the other bogs on Totten Ave, one of my clients actually went to their house the last week and spoke with them, and asked them, you know, what are you doing down there if anything? And he said he has not harvested cranberries nor done anything on the bogs for some years. So you've misled, misled on this issue, you know, who knows what else you've been misled on? There are no other active bogs that are being harvested right now. Quick other comment, I guess, about sort of timing and procedural. My understanding is that the Conservation Commission has not finished their review. I think the applicant is next on the agenda for them on March 25th. It would seem prudent to me for the Planning Board to wait until after Conservation Commission has finished their review and maybe make some changes to the site plan, who knows, before the Planning Board makes their decision. Doesn't seem like it's any hard, really waiting two more weeks until the Conservation Commission has wrapped up. Finally, both myself and my client, we went back through all of the videos of all the meetings, the one at the first meeting at the end of January, and the two so far in February, and I think my client posted a bunch of videos and maybe even sent them around, hopefully you've had a chance to watch them. There are many instances of contradictions the applicant has stated and promises of information from the applicant which he has not followed through. Over the course of the past three meetings, there have been many questions asked by the Board and the butters to which the applicant has replied, "I'm not sure." In my opinion, no decision should be made until all that information is provided. Over the course of the past three meetings, there have been many questions asked by the Board and the butters to which the applicant has replied, "I could look into that." As of tonight, the answers to many of those questions have not been provided. In my opinion, no decision should be made until all that information is provided. Finally, over the course of the past two meetings, there have been occasions in which the Board specifically asked for information to be provided. As of tonight, the applicant has not provided some of that information. Again, no decision should be made until all that information is provided. You don't have to take my word for it. Later tonight, or maybe starting shortly, you're gonna hear from the butters... Later tonight, or maybe starting shortly, you're going to hear from the Butters regarding specific examples of these requests and information that remain unanswered. You need the answers to those questions before you can make a decision. That's all I have. I don't know if you want to open it or turn it over to the Butters.
I did have a couple of questions, and frankly, a comment to, I think, the point you raised in terms of posting, the bylaw is a valid one. I'm not sure how we best deal with that, whether in fact we can post the bylaw approved by Attorney General, but I think we'd be jeopardizing our standing if we were to take action before it was posted, so thank you for that point. You raised another point which we raised last time around, you caught me off guard that I was shuffling some papers and I didn't fully understand the impact of what you were driving at in terms of spot zoning, where this is the only current active, as you've just restated, and I'll take your word for it, I don't know the status of others, but as I agree with the bylaw, it doesn't say existing. It's not to say that it could not be future cranberry bogs, so I don't see that, because at the time you asked about notification to a Butters, it's an required by law. It's an applicable bylaw throughout town, more importantly, but more practically, as it pertains to cranberry bogs, there's obviously soil conditions, water availability, and light, but we can't prejudge every location in town. When I say "we" in town, can't prejudge where this bylaw may or may not be applicable, so I don't see where we're running into an issue with spot zoning. It's just so happened that this one is covered by it, but that's not to say there may not be others in the future. So, I apologize for not having been a little more responsible when you first raised that point.
No, and that does, of course, the counterargument to my point, and I think there are, it's a debatable issue.
And the one question I had, and I didn't get, forgive me, but I didn't watch the videos all over again of three meetings, I believe, so I had some other things that occupied my time, but what I was concerned with is, has the, have those videos and the inserted comments been made available to the applicant?
I will let the creator of those videos answer that question. I don't know if that should...
Everything I said to the planning board is posted on the website as the client here, so I'm not sure she's posted.
I don't think it's on, I don't think it's been posted to the planning board's website, but...
It was forwarded to the, all of, all of the, all of the videos were sent to the applicant. I think, close enough to 8:50 by the time the applicant gets up and starts, my apologies, I guess I may have clocked one more hour. Adam, or Amy, if you're ready. Ready to go?
Thank you. Tonight, we don't have any updates to the plans, no significant changes since the last hearing. We're here tonight to answer any more questions that may come up, and we'll certainly be taking notes as the Butters come to ask more questions. One thing that I did say I was going to look into, well, there are a few things after the last hearing, and I forwarded some information to the director, but one other thing that we were going to look into was the landscaping in front of Fuller Drive, 19 Fuller Drive.
If you could pick up a little?
Yeah.
Actually, if you could pick up the mic, I think would be helpful.
I'll do it.
Okay. So, I was just, I'll just summarize quickly. We don't have any updates to the plans tonight. There are no significant changes to the projects. We're here to answer whatever additional questions there may be. One thing in particular, I want to bring up, which relates to that pictures in front of you, was that we did look into the question about screening if necessary from the Fuller Drive homes. We looked at it again, we don't think there is based on what we see, and that's the pictures that we put in front of you. I'm not, you're looking at 13 Fuller Drive here from, from this bridge. And so, I think our attorney, Patrick Gallagher, was Dean Torquay, the State Firm, that Charles McVay, Works with, forwarded you those letters, has a couple of comments, and then we'll kick it off to the end of that hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having us here again. As Adam said, we're happy to address any new questions that come up either from the board or from the neighbors. That said, at this point, the applicant feels that with any additional questions that come up tonight, that the board should hopefully be in a position that it is able to close the public hearing at the conclusion of tonight's, tonight's questions and testimony. To briefly address a couple of the things that the attorney for the Butters raised, we are putting the cart before the horse to be raising questions about the validity about whether or not the zoning bylaw amendment is starting to be, it would be unprecedented in Massachusetts for a 180-acre-plus area to be deemed spot zoning. Moreover, there's nothing in the amendment that would violate the state constitution, there's nothing that violates, there's nothing that gives us any indication that the Attorney General will not certify this. That being the case, we are here under the floodplain district section of the bylaw and the associated site plan review section of the bylaw. We are not here under the prior regulations, which are not in force. We are here under the current version of the bylaw. And by current version of the bylaw, the only criteria for the special permit that this board is charged with looking at has to do with excavation, fill in structures in the floodplain, and whether or not this project will increase the water surface elevation of 100 feet or less. That doesn't have anything to say about the vitality of the cranberry bog, doesn't have anything to say about use, about diminution of property value, about the validity of the adoption of that zoning bylaw amendment. We're only here for the purpose of looking at the criteria under the floodplain district special permit bylaw and the associated site plan review section.
Counsel, just so that we're all on the same page, the attorney makes a good point in that the bylaw under which you, and I don't want you to jerk and use the word "escape," review under special permit is because of the change in the bylaw taken at town meeting. That change does not take effect until that bylaw is posted. So, and I'm not sure whether we can post it. I know traditionally, towns do not post a bylaw until it's been approved by the Attorney General's office. So, there is no, again, shortcut through the process until that bylaw is approved, and I don't see how we can close the hearing. To be candid, my hope had been to close the hearing tonight. We had made arrangements to have town council here at our next meeting to guide us as to what the parameters are of consideration for approval and denial, but unless other members feel differently, based on that point, my thought would be to continue this for the purposes of hopefully having that bylaw posted and making a decision, closing the hearing at our next meeting and making a decision, but I don't see how you can have it, if you will, both ways.
Understood, and I appreciate you making that clarification, and what you say is our understanding as well for how towns normally post bylaw amendments after they have been approved by the Attorney General. I guess it's only our point that we are at a point that it seems as though all of the questions that there are to ask about this proposal have been asked, to the extent that we can move closer to finality in terms of this public hearing, the applicant would appreciate that.
I'm going to open up to questions from the board first, and then I'd ask you to file at the mic, and of course, we'll give three minutes.
Could you tell me, I had before me your letter, September 27th, which you filed with site plan approval, special permit for locations in the floodplain region, and a special permit for solar use existing on 22. Have you filed a subsequent, special, maybe special permit? Have you withdrawn that special permit for solar use?
Our application tried to be clear that the special permit for solar use was in the event that the zoning amendment did not pass at town meeting, and our subsequent correspondence hopefully made clear that the site plan approval and the special permit under the floodplain are what's being addressed. We certainly can formally issue a letter if more is needed to withdraw that, but the application did caveat that it was only in the event that the zoning amendment was not passed.
Having been submitted, I believe, and having been published, don't you need our consent to withdraw and would you be withdrawing with prejudice?
Seeing as we have explicitly said in our application that that special permit application is contingent on whether or not town meeting approved the zoning amendment, we would be comfortable withdrawing that application. Yes.
The only problem about it, in the very, very, very odd chance that the Attorney General for some reason disapproves the bylaw, then the only avenue you have is the old special permit avenue. So, I don't know that it would be prudent to withdraw at this point, but that's your call.
Perhaps, especially as the hearing likely will be continued beyond tonight, we can advise and write and have defendants here, as to whether we'll formally, but I anticipate that we would.
Could you tell me whether, I know you indicate the areas in an area of critical environment are concerned, is it also technically in a water protection district? Zone 2, I believe?
Stacy's just going to take a second to look at the...
What, what are you looking at that? Maybe I should ask you something else. One of the other areas we had then was salt panels. One of the questions came up about the same noise, and we focused here on decimals, but what was water, but this other one was a real concern over megahertz, and how, in fact, children sometimes have a more, have a higher sensitivity to those sounds than adults do, and I don't know that you presented any kind of testimony or data dealing with megahertz. If you did, could you direct us to it?
We did not get, you know, the references, all the documentation I gave you. All the information that we have from the sources we provided, megahertz is not something that's ever been looked at in that. And the information we have from the inverters only pertains to decimals. I'd certainly have to ask if there is information from the water manufacturer regarding hertz, but that's not something that I'm familiar with.
I think it would be important for me, anyway. One of the other things, this other developer was talking about string inverters, and I don't know whether, any reference in terms of being in a residential area, they prefer to use string inverters, there was less sensitivity, although there's a lot of water room, they seem to be smaller, less prone to throw up noises. Have you guys, have you considered using string inverters in this project?
We haven't, because larger scale projects, string inverters aren't really the best design choice, and I'm also, I don't know much about string inverters because we don't use them often, and I'm not sure if that is true about the noise. I know sometimes smaller inverters can actually produce more noise than larger inverters on a, when you look at it on a proportional, proportional basis. So, it's, the string inverters are not something we would like to have, though, and I don't think they would be a justifiable design choice for this project.
The other question I had to do with the status of screening, since the last meeting, have you reached out and spoken to any of the other Butters in terms of coming to something agreeing with them or explaining what you're proposing?
No, I have not talked with any of the other Butters. As I mentioned, the screening proposed here was done in conjunction with feedback from the manager, and the screening proposed here is on, on all of our land, the screening proposed here is on our land, and the screening up until here is on the blue layer property where we have a tentative agreement in place that we can put into effect once we find out if the proposed screening is sufficient. And the property, that 222, which was raised at the last hearing, what we proposed there was based on the conversation I had with, with that and the Butters. I understand you subsequently submitted a letter saying that you prefer for the screening to not be on his property. What I would point out that, as part of that conversation as well, we actually increased our setback along the town line up here from 50 to 100 feet in order to protect these sheds here, and this portion, the western portion of the screening is actually within easement that benefits to the property here, so the, so the only portion that's on this land is not any easement, is this smaller portion right here, and, you know, our, again, our take on, on that is that it's up to the many more to decide how much screening is sufficient, when we're taking into account existing vegetation, which there is here, and the fact that we've increased the buffer here more than double, I think we're almost triple the required buffer along this property line, and doubled the setback here to accommodate the Butters' request, and we are happy to install the screening if the Butters wants us to, but if the Butters prefers us not to, we believe that we have sufficiently buffered through a combination of the set, the increased setbacks we're using, as well as the existing vegetation there to satisfy the requirements of bylaw.
What property is that?
222.
Now, there's a, there's a driveway easement that runs along that property line, etc.
Right, there's operations and access easement along its, this, the bolt button here is our property line, or the existing property line, which is essentially the edge of the bog, and for 25 feet to the east of this property line is where the operations and access easement is.
How wide is it?
25 feet.
And you're proposing to have the landscaping within that 40 acre area?
Sorry, 25 feet.
25 feet?
We, we...
It's probably getting harder.
Sure, it's written, I'm sure it gets involved when we first...
No way.
There's a portion that runs about two-thirds of the way up to this property, that's on the west side, that's where the easement, and then there's a smaller portion that takes up about half of this property that's outside of the easement, but again, that design is based on the conversation I had with anyone where the intent was to fill in the understory of the existing vegetation.
Is there anything providing driveway access to the five apartments, or how do you get access to this property?
Oh, right here, off the road. Oh, right here, uh, off the big road.
And so they can, they, they leave their trucks at the door or whatever, you know, there's no access across the property, I'm taking it, I'm taking it.
Uh, there, there are, there's a whole network of roads that the, um, that emergency vehicles can use.
Have you removed the fire department, are they comfortable with it?
I don't think out there is a fire department, I know the fire department reviewed the application, um, and I think part of the, uh, building, uh, permit process will involve going out there with the, um, fire department to inspect the roads.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you?
No, go ahead.
Answer that zone two question, I just wanted to make sure that my recollection was correct. Yes, the site, um, is within a zone two.
Have you applied for a special permit to use it? Have you applied for a special permit? But that's a string break.
I'm not aware, Pat, if you have information, I'm not aware that a special permit is required for zone two.
If you get a chance, would you just let me know why you think that was the case?
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Um, like, like a lot of folks here, I have some concerns about, um, the inverters not being reached out to. Um, I think it would be a good idea to put together a list of the inverters and, and let us know who you've actually spoken with, um, anybody who would like to be spoken with about, um, any, any of the landscape, anything that, you know, sparks. I, I think that's very concerning to me personally, that, um, as, as a neighbor coming in here, you know, a lot of people have said they haven't been reached out to, so, um, at this point, how far we've gotten, I, I would have expected that to happen. So I'd like to see a list of who, who you've actually reached out to and spoken to. And if there are, um, anyone here in the audience that would like to be spoken with, maybe put a name down, get a list, that, that's my big concern.
Okay. Uh, we mentioned at some, a couple of meetings I've had have been asked to remain confidential. So, um, I'll see if they want to release that or not.
Okay. Uh, you, you know, a, a lot of times people aren't gonna respond, so I mean, I, I'd like to just see that you've reached out, um, if, if the neighborly thing to do, if, if anything is just to reach out and find out if there's anything that can, I mean, it's already gotten very, you know, very heated and it's, and that might ease a little bit if not, you know, maybe nothing, but, um, that might help.
Okay.
Hi, I do wanna follow up on the same point that Warren raised earlier in regards to the sound and not only the sound, but the frequency. Um, I, I definitely want us to receive an answer as to what type of frequency of sound will be emanating, be it from the inverters or, or any other component of the system. Um, so, you know, please get back to us with that, we'll, we'll expect, you know, to hear our answer from you. Um, along those lines, I know you don't have it tonight and that's fine. Um, so that, that was my first point. Um, the screening, um, on what you've shown, um, from my end, I do have some concerns with the height of the screening against some of the properties, um, on how high up that would be blocking from, um, line of sight views. I believe in our last meeting, um, I asked the question, um, and we roughly determined about a five foot height line was what was used on the, um, schematics. Um, you know, for me personally, I would like to see for the immediate inverters to this property where screening would occur, I, I would expect to see a line of sight schematic, um, that shows, um, the initial proposed height of those plantings as well as mature height of those plantings and have, you know, legitimate line of sight views as to how that would have impacted each of those inverters. Um, so please take that away and, um, give that consideration. I would expect us to have that, um, view into, um, the proposed plan as it pertains to the screening. Um, the next point that I will make is, um, through several of the meetings I would imagine at this point, we have had questions, uh, as it pertains to baseline testing of sound, of water, um, EMF, um, things along those lines. And I, I will say I do support that effort to understand what, uh, where we are today and what that impact would be, should this go forward, and, um, what that impact is, you know, at X periods down the line. Um, so I, I think that needs to be given some consideration. Um, you know, this is a large scale installation and there are folks surrounding this whole, um, piece of land and, you know, um, we need to be cognizant of that and do our best to obtain as much knowledge and information and to the extent, a level of certainty as to what those folks can expect. Um, so that would be my expectation as well. So I, I hope you strongly consider those as points to bring forth before we, you know, reach a conclusion on this. Um, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Um, I, I just want to agree with, uh, the baseline testing for everything, I think that's, um, that goes without saying for me. Um, and as far as the list of, of inverters, I understand that there may be some that don't wanna come forward and say that you've negotiated. Um, but I, I do wanna reiterate the point that, that I, I do wanna know that everybody has been reached out to.
Sure.
And, and not just, you know, this one, this one family, this other family here. Um, there's, there's a lot of interfaces here that might help one, might help none, but, um, it'll definitely help me.
I will be.
Questions?
So I took, I took, uh, last week and read the raw materials that, that have been provided both by the inverters and, and by you, Adam. And I think to second Stephen, Steve, I, I've yet to read something that has a real similar factor to this. I read, um, Q and A, I, I read this study, there's nothing this size, I know there's nothing in a cranberry bog, I'm guessing the leverage doesn't match, I'm guessing it's not tractable panels. I'm trying to find a string and I haven't found one. So if there is something out there that has any comparable aspect to this project, I would, I would love to see that come forward. So I kinda have prioritized what you have provided us, because I feel like it's on the applicant, um, not necessarily the inverters, to find these like relatable articles or studies. And I personally haven't found something that I can absolutely say, okay, this is happening in the northeast, this is comparable on more than maybe, at this point, obviously one level, not even two, that has some similar component to this project. So, I mean, the, the largest in this is 3.5 megahertz, this is 8.7, that's double this. So I unfortunately do not consider this to be, uh, a baseline, so to speak, or something that we can really hang our hat on for 50 to 150 feet when you're talking something that's double. And I don't know if these had batteries, I, you know, a number of them didn't have inverters that were all stacked together, they were spaced out around the property. So to the point about having baselines, to me this isn't comparable. So if there is other information out there, I, I would welcome it and I will read it, but I haven't read anything yet.
Sure, I, I'm happy to, um, do another search and provide, um, with more similar project characteristics. And the reason why I really feel that's relevant is because the, um, that it is the same technology, just, um, you know, a different scale, a different application, so a lot of them.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I can. Sorry, I lost my voice a little bit, but, um, I was saying that the, the reason we felt those studies are, why we feel those studies are relevant is because they address the same technology and a lot of the questions were pertaining to, um, you know, just the technology in general and, um, these, a market respect it does, um, it, it answers some of those questions because some of the questions are about, um, the technology in general and, and can be scaled. But I, I'm happy to, um, look for, uh, studies of more similar size and, um, related technologies.
Okay, uh, at this point I'll open it up to folks from the audience. Again, I will limit this. Was there any clarification?
Yes, just one clarification for the, um, request regarding the screening view shed. So the existing cross-sections that we submitted, um, did show the height at planting and then the anticipated mature height. Um, and I know you referenced and I think we're alluding to, uh, different heights that you would like the view, course, view sheds started from. I just wanted to get clarity on specifically, um, what you were looking for.
Well, I guess one of, one of, every house is probably different in terms of their design, their height, um, some may have a walkout basement, some may have, you know, first level, um, at a, you know, I, I think we need to understand, um, what that would look like from the, the, the main first floor of each house and if there's a second floor, you know, to what extent that second floor is.
Okay, thank you.
You know, that'd be one of those. So I, I would expect, you know, if someone's looking out the bedroom window, you know, I would expect to see what that would be.
Right, I will confirm, I believe our existing cross-sections show essentially from the first floor.
Yeah, please.
I, I confirmed it's a six foot height.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but second floor I will add to our list.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I have one thing to that too?
Also look at the elevation across the bog as well. Does, does the elevation change at all when you're looking at the site, if you're planting the screen here and then the bog raises an elevation, will that change the distance from panels as they cross, across the bog? Does the elevation change at all?
It changes very slightly. I think that our cross-sections do account for, um, you know, if there's an access road way, it shows that that's higher than the surrounding area, but I will confirm.
Okay, thanks.
Close your sec, again, uh, we're limited to three minutes, it's approximately 15, we have another hearing scheduled tomorrow. Um, I don't know that everyone will get a chance, so just warning them to fast, please, just come to the mic and identify yourself.
Meredith Falconer, 11th floor drive. Um, on this, this particular view, you know, it's been brought up a couple of times and I'm just not sure if they've come down full drive recently when this project started specifically based on this, um, projection. Um, my house is right here and, um, Kathy's house is right here, um, you are on here. We've tried to bring it up a couple of other times, unfortunately, the last meeting, I was homesick with myself and my daughter with the food, um, but I did have a neighbor that tried to bring that up and they said that they've gone with the full drive and that it doesn't need any screening at all. Um, I do have a photo that I can let you keep that does kind of just show you a little bit of what it looks like when you move there. Um, and this is kind of a, the new Google image of, you know, whatever, we're questioning out there there because they're not on this particular map. Um, and again, I'm just not sure if maybe they haven't been down full drive recently or they're just kind of thinking that the one that is here nine, which is really in the middle of the woods, actually isn't on the map, um, I just really couldn't help addressing it and running a bell. So either that or they think that that screened well enough. But, um, to me, I just think that they're kind of visiting full drive. And I do question, you know, has it reached out to me nor Kathy, um, to see how they feel about it. I suppose right now it hasn't been a conversation at all, but, um, even though I've tried a few times, um, to bring that up. So I guess maybe my question is, is have they been down full drive since they originally started researching this project?
No.
I don't, will my address, no, no questions, no interest.
Is this Google Maps?
Adam, could you?
Google Maps, yes, I wrote on the map, sorry.
And we, we can, Meredith?
You can keep those, yeah, I wrote my name, yeah, Justin.
Yeah, so we did, uh, we, uh, took pictures, we evaluated the bike, we took pictures from, um, the cranberry bogs side, not from the full drive side. And so the picture I, um, just divided to the flag where it was taken.
Adam, could you speak up, I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry, I said, yeah, when we evaluated screening for full drive, we took pictures from the cranberry bog, um, uh, looking, uh, right over the bogs up to the houses here. Yes.
It's a different.
This is the photo.
Right, yeah, so you, but you just saw our photos, right? So it's a very different view from our, what we're seeing versus that. But again, we have, we haven't been down.
So you guys are kind of right, I'll say right off, off the map, kind of as this, as as.
No, I mean, my lot, my lot is here.
Point two?
Right here.
I'm sorry.
Well, I know, it's directly in front of nine.
Ah.
And then Kathy's is directly next to me, even a little further forward.
Okay.
And then I think, um, thirteen, remember thirteen is the house we're seeing right here, the, um, the top portion of it. Um, so that's thirteen and then nine is behind those taller trees.
So screening will be addressed because we can see our houses from the bogs.
I think what, your reason why I think it's properly or sufficiently screened is that, um, all the, from the view line up here, which would be the same amount from the house, is that only there is seen eight times on the roof, um, from the bogs, that was at least, um, when he looked at, that's what we saw on, um, the screens or what that's here. Okay.
Hi, Joe, 1122 B Road. We've heard four members here this evening talk about police force, talking about screening, baseline studies and testing. That's gonna take a little while to do. And there was a chairman, I think, said that he was talking about closing the next session. What is the rush? This is a 30-year project. Why, why are we rushing this? We should be spending four to six months analyzing this situation. Could you please tell me, Mr. Chairman, what the rush is here?
I know that I characterized the rush, it's a pragmatic consideration. We have an election coming up where two members will no longer be on board, uh, so it requires some type of action, um, or the process starts all over again.
Okay. Well, let's, let's talk about, let's talk about from the standpoint of the testing. It's very reasonable to request of this applicant that they perform a noise study. That would cost about $5,000 and take a month. That's something that the residents would like to have happen. Would the board agree tonight that we should ask the applicant to do that, perform that study? That would help to answer some of these questions that people have. Approving the project and then having the studies doesn't make sense. The study should come first to help make a decision as to whether or this project should go forward. Wouldn't you agree?
Um, if there's a motion to that effect, uh, at some point tonight, or again, uh, since counsel had raised the point, the county bylaw had it posted, we will not be closing the hearing tonight.
Can, can, I'm not familiar with this procedure. Can we ask that question now, can we raise the motion now?
Well, again, anyone is free to make the motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion. You'll help us.
Ask the council member for it.
Okay. Well, can you help the board make that motion, please?
They can, and then again, I'm not looking to, uh, cut them off or not, but since we're not going to be wrapping this up tonight, there's still our opportunity to have that motion made. Again, I'm not, I'm not asking for a motion, I'm not denying someone's ability to make the motion.
I understand you, and, and I know you're trying to do a good job, but the reality is when you say this is gonna close the next hearing, that is setting the whole thing up. I don't, this is such a big project, 8.7 megawatts. It's literally crazy to be putting this in a residential neighborhood, but if you're gonna entertain this, I'll give you another example. I brought up the la, at the last meeting, that we should consider if you're gonna go down this path, a 4.5 megawatt project. Financially, that works. Can we request of the applicant that he provide plans showing a 4.5 megawatt project? Can we do that?
He's obviously free to submit whatever he wants to submit, but the point is that he has submitted what he has and that's what the board has to act on.
But, but the board has the ability to guard it.
No, but the board.
To do the project size to make it work with the bylaws, right?
It works, then, you know, what do you wanna call it, unfortunately, fortunately, it works with the bylaw. The bylaw allows for any size scale solar facility under the adopted bylaw that was passed at town meeting. Um, again, he's free or they're free to submit whatever they want to submit, what they've submitted is what we're for, Sam.
I hear you, but then there are also parts of the bylaws in this town that allow you to make changes to those plans based upon other factors such as screening. That's been brought up here many times, screening. It's impossible to screen this project from the residential side because of the size of these panels and the height of them.
I understand that in terms of the difficulty, but again, I'm not gonna cut you out, your time is up, but in terms of the screen, I know. But in terms of the screen, I know that. Well, then you'll have to get to the end of the line. If you're yielding your three minutes to Mr. Cogliano, which is fine with my meeting, if you are, then you're going to have to get to the back of the line.
I'm not sure. I talk all night.
Obviously, this is a very difficult area to screen. That's part of the consideration. If the board feels they haven't adequately screened and they can't adequately screen, that'll weigh into whether the board approves or does not approve. But again, I can't, and I don't know that any member of the board can act on what ifs in terms of whether they submit something that's smaller in scale. All we have is a facility that has been put in front of us and that's what we're going to act on. The screening issue will be addressed as part of the approval or non-approval, or there will be requirements for the screening to be added or demonstrated that it serves the intended purpose. Again, we're not in a position to act on a 4.5-megawatt facility or a 2.5 or a 10.5. What we have is what we have and that's what we're acting on.
But you do have the authority under the bi laws to ask for changes to these plans so that they conform with other aspects of the law, is correct?
What I'm saying is it conforms to our bi laws. The screening may or may, as proposed, may or may not be effective. That's a determination to be made by the board. And if they feel the screening is not adequate, then they'll vote in court.
Okay, I'm not just talking about the screening, I'm also talking about the size of the project, but.
And I'm pretty much.
Let me get on to something else, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to discuss. Part of this process requires the applicant to obtain a predetermination letter from the DOE, Department of Energy Resources. There's no point in moving this thing forward until they get that letter, which I don't think they're going to be able to get because this project isn't in the spirit of the regulation that is trying to help Cranberry Farms. Do you, would the board consider postponing a decision on this until we get a predetermination letter? Or again, is this election issue driving, which although I understand you and I feel what you're saying, the bottom line is, that's irrelevant when you're talking about a 30-year project. Sir, would you agree?
The DOE, whether they get it or not, is somewhat moot. We have, obviously, if they don't get it, then we've gone through this exercise for nothing. But the applicant has a right to have a decision made on their application. There's no requirement that they have in advance of applying for that site plan and special permit, a DOE commitment.
Will the board consider asking for these studies before you make a decision so that you can make the best decision that you can? Can we get any type of motion on that decision?
Again, if someone wants to make that motion, I'm prepared to entertain it. I'm not going to force anyone to make the motion. I think the point has been made and I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman, if the applicant would like to respond?
Well, I can. Well, unless we've let the questioner ask their questions, so there's still time left on Mr. Cogliano's yield of time. So I'll ask the applicant to respond after Mr. Cogliano's uses time.
Is there any avenue that you could see that would allow this to proceed past the April 23 issue regarding the election? Has this ever happened before in the history of the town? Is there some other mechanism that we can use that would allow this to proceed in a more normal manner?
The applicant could take their chances with five members remaining on the board and getting an unanimous decision. Or they could file all over again. Again, I'm not an attorney, but that's, those are the two approaches that I would say.
Does the board feel that, given the screening that's been discussed where we're saying that from the second floor, you're still going to be able to see this project, do you feel that that meets the requirements of Section 22.3D that requires more extensive screening? Does the board feel that what we're discussing here, that that's going to meet that requirement? Even with the questions that were raised, they were posed to go back to a brothers and all that?
Again, as Chairman, I facilitate, I don't answer for individual members. I think you've heard concern expressed by more than one member tonight that the five-foot line of sight that was originally proposed isn't going to satisfy that. So my sense is, and I can stand to be corrected, that there is still some concern as to line of sight, how that can be improved so that either from a higher level or even a second floor level, that's up for each member to determine for themselves. There's nothing in the bi laws that states exactly what that is. And Mr. Cogliano, your time, second time is up, so I'm just trying to answer that question. But I'm trying to read the tea leaves here and say to you and the applicant, there is still concern that the five-foot level that was presented is not adequate. And if I'm misrepresenting folks, then they're free to say so, but your time is up, Mr. Cogliano.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Cogliano's statements about the baseline testing. I think, you know, if it's done appropriately and reasonably, that's something that we're open to. I think it's much easier to do for noise and EMF than it is for water. I'm not sure what water testing would really be looking at. But I also believe that, you know, since the purpose of that would just be to establish a baseline, that only needs to be done prior to construction and wouldn't need to be done now. And I'm not sure what, how that information would be used in your decision-making at this point. So it seems like that would fit better as a, as a condition for the project rather than something to be done right now.
George Adams, 208 Bay Road. So I submitted this, I don't know if I have enough here, but.
Joel, here's the letter that came.
Yeah, so some of those pictures. Yeah, no, no, next to us. Yeah, go on, see these pictures. So, Marion's going to make fun of me doing this in the car, so. So, so what I did is, so last week was the first we actually heard the sideline as a five. So what I did is take a construction baseline, that's an eight-foot ladder, that's a pine tree on the property line, and I tidied about 11 feet high here. And I pulled out a machine line here that you guys familiar with basic memory lines and how to get a line of sight, so I just took it all the way to my house. You can see it's approximately four to five feet off the basement level site line from the family bounce property. Here's that ladder showing that line. Hard to see in these pictures, that's eight-foot ladder, so it's above that, it just goes down. And it's in this line again, and this, this is my indoor window, which is, you know, we probably have, what, 30 people every Christmas and then Easter in this room. It's a direct view of, what, 22,000 panels. I don't see how you could possibly block that view. This is an 11-foot group, which is a fully grown tree that they're proposing. There's no, it's literally going to come in that basement window. And so unless we move Thanksgiving to the basement, it's really, it's not working here. And I think Joe just made an interesting point that you guys are rushing this. You know, most of us think this is an $80,000 issue, but you know, lose, so. Marion, I'll tell you, I spent six months buying $200 vacuum, right? You guys have tried to rush this through this meeting and this is an $800 issue. I've had maybe three minutes up here. I probably have 30 minutes more of a question, but I can't see how you could, I don't care what permit actually applies here. If you look at what they're doing, they're not farming. We told you that at the whole up. If you look at what Dr. did, all five of them, hands down, raised their hand, said, you're a problem, you're not a farmer. Pretty powerful stuff. So if we're saying what permit applies to the yard, it doesn't make any sense to do anything here. And we did talk about a meeting last, last meeting, we had a snowstorm here, weren't able to walk the property, but I honestly don't see how, if you look over here, too, this is our swimming pool here, which is a focal point in the backyard. That's up a little high, too. So that line is really in the fence of the pool. There's just no way you could possibly.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Jen Seden. I live at 14 Clap Street and I would welcome you to do a sound study. They can do it on my property. So I live next to a large-scale solar farm and I appreciate that you guys are bringing up the sound from the inverters in terms of megahertz because when it wasn't yet built on Clap Street, it wasn't unknown. But now we're here, we're a living study. So if anyone wants to come to my property and take decibel levels, megahertz levels, they're welcome to do that. So one of the reasons I'm here tonight is I spoke with the town manager on March 6th. I went to see the town planner, but he was at lunch, so I caught the town manager. And he talked about enforcing the agreement on Clap Street. And what he said to me was, he was struggling with how to enforce it because there were no statutes regarding megahertz and that he didn't think he was going to be able to enforce it. So that being said, I felt I was obligated to come here and let you guys know that although the conditions in agreement by the planning board was made with the town plan, town council because it was the second time it was remanded back to the planning board. So even though town council was present for the creation of the agreement for Clap Street, the town manager is now struggling with how to enforce it because he doesn't think there's any laws or find any statutes regarding frequency and megahertz, just decibels and volume. So I just thought I would bring that to your attention because like I said before, I don't enjoy my backyard anymore. My kids won't go in it. So, you know, we don't want a few houses on Clap Street, there's many, many houses on Good Road. So I would take that into consideration, that if the town manager is struggling with how to enforce something, that that could become a problem. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
George, here's 207 Bay Road. Well, you know that after a couple of, you know, a couple of months that we've seen each other, I do have new followers back where you guys. Where you guys are going, I'm sorry. One, two. This is all, this is about growing cranberries, right?
George, can you turn it on? It's actually going to get shut off.
Thank you. We're on. This is about growing cranberries, right? Pretty much, you know, that's part of the thing. For all the work, it's about growing cranberries, I think. This was given to me a letter from a cranberry grower with over 35 years of experience. They want me to read it. Right now, they want to stay anonymous. They, one of them here, they have dealt with Next Sun. I'm not sure, I need to get more information. We just got this information. And I will get this letter out to all you guys and also to agricultural. So I'm going to read the best I can. Wasn't too good at growing, so here I go. So, Next Sun Energy has not demonstrated cranberry yields under the solar panels. According to the guidelines regarding the definition of agricultural solar tariff generation units, effective date April 26, 2018, which states, demonstrated on how the proposed dual-use design will provide equal or greater total agricultural yields than if both. Maybe, anybody else want to read this?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, she'll take it. I'm a pizza cook, I don't know. You know, I know where you guys are going through and I understand. But also hope you guys look at us what we're going through. There you go.
Yeah, I got it. Demonstrate how the proposed dual-use design will provide equal or greater total agricultural yields than if both the agricultural crop and the solar array were grown and installed separately utilizing the same amount of total land area for the comparison. Shaded ends of cranberry box usually have less than half the yield of the non-shaded areas. 50% is shaded, so at least 25% overall crop reduction from the shade itself. The shade from panels make the box stay wet longer and increase fruit rot. Poles and panels will interfere with the irrigation systems and precipitation which reduces uniformity. Non-uniform applications done through the irrigation allows for increased disease and pest pressure which drops the yield. In conclusion, the crop will be at least cut in half and lowered quality. The panels take up more than twice the acres for the same output. This does not demonstrate equal or greater yield. If these structures must be built, why not in industrial parks, median strips on highways or over train tracks instead of wetlands? If the growers or cranberries really thought this would work, why not take the offered 3,000 per acre lease and keep their crop, instead selling out production 50,000 per acre, which the solar company is willing to pay to get the extra six cents per kilowatt for dual purpose?
Question, we look at the letter without mentioning that we wrote that?
I'm sorry?
Is that from, can we actually see the letter without mentioning?
Yes. Okay.
Is it redacted, George?
No, I can get more.
Before you give it to anyone, if it comes to trouble, there's no name on it.
No, but I'll get them sent out, you know, and find out more information.
If you get it, you can get it redacted, George.
Yes, I will.
It doesn't have any address, that type of thing, so if that person wants to stay anonymous, because Joe's right, if we get it, then it's going to be public.
I will have it out by next week. Thank you.
I would just say that, I would say that there are some cranberry growers out there that don't think it'll work. The majority do and the Cape Cod Cranberry Growers Association is a strong proponent of this program. And I think, you know, we have to follow up with a letter from the Cape Cod Cranberries Growers Association, which is the main industry association for, that cranberry grows in Massachusetts, that essentially reviews what that apparently disrespectful grower is saying. So I will follow up with that for the next minute.
Thank you. Check out 207 Bay Road. We'll let you know, just go up the Clap Street. I think we'll agree that they have an issue on Clap Street. That was only 10 houses and they had 21 weeks to work out that.
George, can you get a little bit closer?
They had 21 weeks to work out their process. We had seven. There's 150 of us. Don't rush, excuse me, want to get this through for you, buddy, this is an election. Give us our due process. Protect us, okay? So don't put elections ahead of getting things done right, please. One-third of the time, what we've been given to Clap Street had 10 houses versus 150. Big difference. How many residents did you speak to? Give me a rough number. 5, 50, 3?
I think we reached out.
Just a quick.
I'm sorry.
It's wrong.
He can answer the question after your, after your three minutes is up. I can't have the base between.
The base is a separate, how many people do you talk to?
Again, he can answer that question when you're done, but he's not going to answer it until you're done.
Well, I think it's just very few, if any, maybe three or four, because we have, how many people have? All this stuff that you folks have been telling him tonight, he should have had well-prepared things, not tonight when you're getting ready to close the whole thing up. When asked about increased mosquitoes, Adam stated that they would add mosquito catchers along the property line. Where exactly would he add those? How many is it in his budget to maintain them? On the June 22nd, Adams was asked if each panel makes a noise or just the inverted pad. He said the panels themselves do not make any noise, the inverter makes the noise. However, later in the same week, he was asked by another brother if there was noise coming from the panels because they were moving around. He stated there's noise coming from the locomotive, but it's less than the inverters. He then stated he would get back to us on the level of noise. Has he done that? I don't think he has. June 22nd, the board then asked Adam if he has this materials within him, he replied no. The solar company for helping yours, the project stated that there is lead in panels from the saw, from the sawing. And this has been confirmed by every manufacturer they've dealt with. They said they're not aware of any companies that do not use the lead. I think we all feel that that company of their day was very, much different than this one. Adam stated provided pictures for the cattle project, cattle project. Has he? No. Adam was asked if the inverter would be making noise at night or just during the day. Adam stated just during the day when the panels are on, then they collect themselves. once again. After a moment, he said there was battery storage. He said with the battery storage, they were made active into the evening hours. Was asked about how long, he replied, I assume, it depends on how long, it would be longer in the sun. I think it would be four hours after sundown. The residents on Hill Street, near the inverter, here 24/7. Has Adam provided any hours of operation? What time trucks would be entered immediately? Did it make a noise? A few hours? I'm about to ask to see pictures.
I'm sorry, your time is up. I'm going to ask the applicant to answer some of those questions that you posed.
He asked how many bitters I've spoken to, reached out to. I've spoken with four of the bitters. And I'll follow up with, again, on the board's request, I'll certainly make myself available to whoever wants to speak. And anybody who has approached me, I've responded to and talked to them if they wanted to. Mosquito catchers, that came up at the cattle pound hearing. And so, there hasn't been any discussion of its own, so I was happy to talk about that more. I think, I'd have to look into what the appropriate number of mosquito catchers would be for the size of the property. So I don't have that answer off the top of my head. And the other issue was the noise from trackers. I did look into that, there's no, I wasn't able to find any information regarding the noise level from the motors. They essentially activate once every 10 minutes or so to push the panels over a few degrees. I will try again to see if I can find anything for the next hearing.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on that? Do they all move in unison? Are they controlled so that they're all moving, so that the noise level is cumulative?
They do all move at the same time. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Ryan Sherman, 222 Bay Road. I just had some follow-up questions for the board and for Nexon about the screening. I appreciate the consent, although I wasn't here at the last meeting, I appreciate my letter, obviously was read in reference. And just for, I did include pictures of the views of my property, but just as a quick reminder, I live in a two-story colonial, it sits up on a hill overlooking the box. One of the reasons I purchased the property is there is a window in my master bedroom that sits on the second floor and has a panoramic view of the cranberry box. So, just as a reference point, I did have some questions about screening, I appreciate the board asking if the second floor would be screened and if lines of sight could be provided. I'm certainly skeptical that my view can be sufficiently screened, and would appreciate seeing those lines of sight. I also was concerned, I think, one of my concerns that I heard was that when Nexon talked about using my property for screening, and I think I kind of, what I heard was that either my property can be used for screening, or my view will not be screened at all. And I just had concerns, and honestly, out of principle bothers me that either as a property owner, I have to use my land to screen this project, or I will not be provided screening. At least, that's the impression that I got. And we'd just like to have the board consider that when thinking about moving this project forward and considering the lines of sight and how those lines of sight are screened, whether it's on butter's property or not. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Before you sit down?
Ryan, can I just ask a question? Is it a one? Her? Is it a son? Okay. That is, okay. Are you the controlling party for the easement that Adam is referencing? Can you give us any background on that? I'm assuming that's, is that your property? I'm just wondering, would you get some clarification around the 25-foot easement that was referenced to Orin's question, if you have any background on that? Or maybe Adam does? I'll take answers from either of you, maybe appropriately.
No, yeah, I appreciate that, I can answer that. So, yes, so when I purchase a property, part of, so the easement, yes, is my property. In fact, I own a land, the easement goes into Easton, so I pay taxes in both towns.
Sorry, Ryan. Maybe easement is a sore topic.
Right. But yes, the easement is my property, as part of my agreement and purchase and sales, I agreed to let cranberry, the cranberry farm use that easement as, you know, give them access to my land, use that easement to continue to farm cranberries.
And just one more follow-up question for you, and I'll let you sit down again. The applicant referenced an agreement with you for screening around your property. I guess, it's a question or a point, I guess, if that agreement is still in effect, that is being shown on the plans as we see, is that agreement still in effect in your mind? Or is it something that should be not in effect and therefore removed from the plans for the board's consideration?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So yeah, we, so I don't wonder if this, this Adam did, we came out to our property, we ran into each other, and to their credit, he referenced there were originally solar panels directly behind my property, right up to it, as those have been put elsewhere. But we haven't, we didn't come to any formal agreements. We don't have anything existing, and I'd never agree to having the screening on my property move forward. Does that answer your question?
It does, I think Adam would like to...
Sure. Yeah. I didn't say that we had a follow-up group idea, which was, referencing was, when we spoke, that, you know, you asked if there's anything you could do to pull back the side line, so we pulled those panels back, and then, well, we were looking at them, and the existing vegetation here, and, you know, I was talking about filling that vein to, essentially filling the memory story, that is, my understanding was that we're talking about this area with the easement and the area, you know, up to the existing, where it's essentially the bottom of the hill where your trees are, filling in that area there. So what I said, that's what we was looking at, and that's how we put throughout that on the plans here, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, so, you know, I appreciate that clarification. I think there was just a misunderstanding. I think, my understanding was, because there, there was pullback on where the panels would be, that in that area where there was pullback, which essentially is Maryland Farm's property, that's where the screening would take place. So I think...
What is pullback?
Yeah, so I think originally, these, I know at the first meeting, these old panels went on the way to the easement. So it was my understanding that now that this land exists between where my property ends and where the solar panels start, that that's where essentially vegetation can be planted, which would, wow. I know it's hard to imagine, but wow, that's...
I'm sure I'm way over. Well, you were responding to a couple of questions from the board, so... Yes, ma'am.
My Gina, this is 207 Bay Road. I would just like to say that I am one of the closest bitters, and I have not been approached regarding a screen. So that is a concern of mine, that I have not been approached. Also, Adam was asked, January 22nd and February 2nd, how far down... Are they going to have to drill to secure the pier? He stated, I don't know the exact depth of the sand, and that would be something we would need to determine in our subsurface investigations. Have those been completed yet and bearing results? On February 5th, Adam said that they use tier-one first quality panels. Tier-one is used by Bloomberg for financial security only. Bloomberg itself purely explains in their executive summary that their tier-one rating does, does not guarantee quality or reliability. The classification is purely measured of industry acceptance, and there are many documents and examples of the quality issues or bankruptcies of tier-one manufacturers. On 225, he stated that they need to maintain access on the access easement. How can you ensure that this is maintained? And also mentioned that he's not aware of any solar projects, pin projects that has common fire. We provided him examples of this in the videos we sent him. The date to the fire department has not been, to date, the fire department has not been trained on solar fires. Adam stated, fire department is just a local burn. How could this possibly be safe for air, soil, and water, dozens of houses close by? Skip ahead just a little bit. Regarding the home values, the fact that he's offering compensation, proves that there's a problem. He's risking the financial wellbeing of our families. We would need way more than $250 for devaluation of companies. Even if we underestimate our homes greatly, at $500,000, a 10% devalue, the cost would be $550,000. At 20% devalue, it would be $1,100. Adam said a $250 bond would be available only if we do not yield. A $250, $100,000 bond is not going to cut it, let's be realistic. The law is intended to help struggling farmers, not a solar company. Just like Duncan said, he's skirting the law, and it's impossible to screen. Stacy also mentioned that there will be a gate entrance at that site, there's an existing one, incorporating another, where the signs with lighting will be installed. Where exactly is that located in your house?
Ask them to respond to those questions that you did post. And that would probably wrap it up. Two minutes and nine.
I'll respond to the first point about the tier-one bank voting list. So, what the tier-one list is used for is a second, it's a judge of how many other banks have underwritten panels, which is used by the solar industry and the financial industry as a marker of quality and durability. Because the assumption is that if other banks have underwritten the technology and the equipment manufacturer, that that's a good sign and something to, that can give you comfort as you do your diligence. So I provided the board information in what I sent over last week on the tier-one ratings. I also provided an independent report from DMGL, who is one of the top, you know, energy independent engineers in the world, that went through a list of many of the top, or the top producing solar manufacturers in the world, and the modules that are being promoted on this project were listed as a top performer in all of the categories that were tested by DMGL specifically for long-term durability and quality.
So, in relation to the tier-one comment, I guess, from your understanding, maybe my interpretation, that the tier-one rating is essentially a version of a credit score for the manufacturers. Having a credit score myself doesn't mean I'm going to pay my credit card bill every month. It means that I'm probably going to pay it, and the credit card company trusts me to do it. Every company, so that's an equivalent, if you would say, is the solar panels have a good score in that respect. They're guaranteed in terms of quality, in terms of that, but they're being viewed by the industry in that light.
Right. And what specifically says, in the tier-one data that I, or the tier-one report to bitters, that this should be used in conjunction with a more technical reporter, an independent engineer, which is what I was just talking about with DMGL, that also provides last week.
All right, folks, it's actually slightly past nine o'clock. We're going to end this portion of tonight's agenda in terms of the special permitting, because we have two others.
Move to continue. Second.
I want to continue the public hearing. Just laugh when you guys talk about the house property. I'm going to look a hundred grand for it. People laughing now. You got a picture of this? Laugh.
Our next meeting is 26th.
From a agenda perspective, would that be the next potential continuance for this? The 26th?
The 26th.
Okay. So my motion is to continue public hearing, and I don't have a timer for me, but Maryland Farms for 82, to our next meeting, March 26th.
I'll still second. There's been a motion and a second to continue to March 26th. Again, for you folks, we don't have a specific time, and probably, more importantly, we don't have a specific location, so kind of stay tuned. But we are closing this session of the hearing.
They want to speak to my other question about this...
I'm sorry, we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. There's been a motion and a second to continue to March 26th. Any discussion during that, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Commandments.
I just thought that if anybody wants to watch the market, let's see it out at home all the way there today, hopefully by the age of 15. 13-foot drive, the panels are left behind, but I have a big drive. Yeah. Do you all buy heat?
If you could get a temperature gauge. She's got to contact her supervisor, so she's the best one you should have. Well, I just remember the other house with Victor off over there, the big pin bolt for those, on the game machines.
So you go down to call the staff, how many are black? Yeah, it was a big one. Yeah, 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 you can tell.
This is Paul's car for one, and then what's your?
Floor is all yours.
Good evening again, Mark, did with Condi and Engineering Group. Jeff O'Neill, Don O'Neill from Condi. Uh, just to bring you up to date where we are with the project, uh, regarding, uh, the first set of site plan, new approvals for buildings one through five, uh, we resubmitted to conservation on February twenty-seventh. Um, it's basically based on the third peer review by Rosley and Whitten Group. Most of the information we resubmitted was, um, some technical data and a narrative, um, along with some minor, uh, rating revision, um, items that, uh, they have already reviewed, um, via email. However, we have a final review letter yet, but, um, there has been no significant layout changes, um, as a result of our work with conservation. Practically last layout change was driveway with this one modified. Um, those changes from thirty feet up to thirty-six feet. Um, and since then, we were granted variances for the three common driveways to be thirty-six feet wide as well as the driveway seven builds and seven to be thirty feet wide. The final, uh, resubmitted to conservation clearly outlined the resource areas we were doing work in or near and how we meet the performance standards. So we feel, um, we feel we have a positive response from Rosley and Whitten and will not have any more changes that would affect, uh, site layout in particular. Uh, the board has any additional questions? It's fine.
Quick question review. What do you mean?
I know, but you go ahead.
Here we go.
Frank, you're throwing, Eric, Frank's thrown off by that. It's not, not yet.
Anyway, just for review, what are you waiting for Washington to win confirmation?
Um, basically, what would be determined as a final review letter, you know, saying all comments have been satisfied. We're still waiting on that. Um, we submitted on the twenty-seventh, so, um, you know, we're hoping to have it prior to our meeting, conservation meeting, um, Monday night, but we do not have it yet. So, that's what we're waiting for.
So just their acceptance of your final third review comment responses. Okay. And you, like you explained before, three comments is normal and then hopefully you're ready?
Yes.
And it was, it was also after a joint work in session with us and the conservation commission.
Oh, okay.
And Rosley went.
Oh, good to know.
Prior to the issue to that third letter that's.
Okay, great.
Does that continue from February twenty-seventh or is that, it has twenty-seven?
The, we resubmitted on the twenty-seventh. Um, the hearing was, uh, last night. We had a hearing, um, and since we didn't have the response, it's been continued again to, uh.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Okay, um, so thank you for the introduction. Um, just to, I think you covered this, but just to restate it for my own mind, mindset, um, there hasn't been a change to the footprint, um, for building five, which is the first building to go up correctly, even though that, as you said, you think that the tenant is not going, they thought whether it's not, you're keeping the layout that they had requested.
That's correct, yes. Footprint is stayed the same.
Okay. Um, and based on the current track of approvals, um, based on how long it takes to put up the building, since that will be first, um, what is your hopeful timeline for construction of that first building?
Uh, we believe that on approval, we probably have about eight to nine months of construction, so the building would be complete looking at end of the year, in the month of November, December, two thousand nineteen.
Any other questions?
At our last meeting, what we called that, you indicated that the tenant you had for building five backed out, um, and then I believe at the conservation question, you mentioned that you had a partial tenant for building five, etc.
Uh, at the last planning board meeting, my comment was we have a potential of losing the tenant due to scheduling. And if you go review the, the, the meeting, that's exactly what I said at that presentation. We do have an interested tenant, but we're day-to-day based on approvals because we have to deliver before the end of the year, the month of November. If we can't deliver before then, then there's no tenant.
What's the size of that tenant?
It's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Okay, I thought that when you gave your consideration, you had a partial, some tenant of partial space.
That's fifty percent of the building. The building is two hundred and twenty thousand square feet, a hundred and ten thousand square feet.
Uh, I just, I noted the definition of common driveways under section two point two. It says a private driveway providing vehicle access to not more than four buildings. And under the criteria, it says that the driveways have to be located within the time limit of the boundaries of the lots to which the driveways provide access and shall be separated from any of the lots to which access, uh, is not being provided by an appropriate landstand buffer area at least twenty feet wide. The common driveways you had provides access to only five buildings as the revenue entrance will fit to the compliance with that provision limiting, uh, landstand buffer zone.
The common driveway between building four and five is for buildings four and five. That's what it said.
But it does have access to the buildings. The, the access between one, two, and three, and four, and five provides access as well to building, this deed for provides access to building five. My reading of the common driveway number two point two doesn't allow you access one of the four properties. Is this something that you've proposed to address that concern?
I, I don't understand any reason why, uh, the occupants of building five would use, um, driveway, the first driveway serving access to one, two, three, and four. This driveway serves access to, is it possible to drive in here, drive behind four and come to five? Yes, it is possible. The tenant of building five will utilize common drive number two. Um, so this driveway is utilized by two buildings. This driveway is utilized by four buildings. Um, the other driveway is not even a common driveway, just servicing one building.
But there is first access between all those buildings. I'm just, I'm just trying to address that concern.
This, this driveway starts here and ends here. This driveway does not.
It doesn't, it talks about access. Common driveways, but limits access to only four buildings. You have access to those, to five buildings, including, you know, the parking spaces alone, you can make a drive up and down and use that and that's not the Bible I said. You may want to address that. The other question I had is, um, when we talked, when we talked at, um, the ZVA, you mentioned an array of different driveway, uh, widths. I believe they range anywhere from about thirty feet to thirty-six, thirty-eight feet. Uh, question I have is your proposal for Leonard Street, from what I understand constitutes only two lanes, each eleven feet wide, could totally add to twenty-eight feet with, with grass. Since you're converting what used to be basically a residential street into what now is basically the main entrance to your industrial park, shouldn't that street be wider than twenty-eight feet?
Common traffic design, um, eleven-foot aisles, uh, driveway lanes is sufficient. Um, this is roadway and, uh, those eleven-foot lanes should be sufficient and that, um, aspect of the project has been reviewed by the traffic consultant. So, um, we don't believe there's any additional reason to widen that any further than that. And if you are providing on top of that some, uh, additional shoulder that's not there today.
I don't believe that is part of the, um, plan that you submitted and I don't know whether or not the traffic consultant reviewed that issue. I'm just raising it now because you convinced everybody that thirty-six feet or thirty to thirty-six feet is appropriate width for, for a, um, industrial park or a business park that you had. All the ones you had are at least, um, I think you said thirty-two feet. And I'm just concerned that now you're converting what is a residential street into basically, because you have, you have, um, you're using, you're putting this story as a business park. So your buildings include not only ones on the south side, but on the north side as well. And there can be two different driveways running off of this road. I'm concerned why that should not be at least saying a distance of thirty-six feet or something at least more than twenty-eight feet.
Um, driveways, it's common practice, uh, in the industry, driveways all throughout, um, Mile Standish Boulevard, um, which is even larger park, the main roads coming in and out have eleven-foot wide aisles. Um, it's just that it's, it's a typical roadway.
Do any of the driveways you referenced in Norton, uh, industrial parks in Norton, that you reference four have twenty-eight foot driveways? Roadways?
Um, Commerce Way we've measured is thirty. Um, I'm not aware of other ones, but, uh, all those roads serving Commerce Way, South Washington, you know, that's another typical road, has typical lanewards. That's what a road is. Is that why? And, um.
So those roads have eleven-foot lanes with a shoulder that's off the edge of it. So the white, beyond the white line.
Please go into the mic, I can hear you, I'm sorry.
Commerce Drive and Norton Commerce Center has eleven-foot aisles. So there's no difference. It's exactly what we're designing here on Leonard, that Commerce Drive has the same aisles. The only difference out at Commerce Drive, it has a little bit more room on the shoulder, um, on the edges of beyond the white lines. And then secondly, as we look at further but down Leonard Street, we have conservation issues that we can't, we can't go into white lines physically to get. So that's where just it gets narrow and we're meeting those requirements all the way down Leonard Street.
Do those cut in, um, after they cut out for buildings, uh, seven or is it?
After building five, before building seven, and then after building seven. So in that location, after seven, in this location, after five.
And just, if you're both speaking, just pass the mic to whoever's talking just so that even if we can hear you, we want it to be able to be heard on playback.
Any other questions? Let's run.
I do want to ask somebody outside of questions, but I am ready to make motion to approve the boost-up business car. Application for site plans and special permit slot through one through five for retail warehouse development. A colleague can help you with this language, but I do want this to be contingent on the conservation review as well as final review letter, what we will, the lawsuit. We have to close up the public hearing first.
Hold on, here's, here's one.
I'll hold my motion.
I'll hold my second.
Yes, please.
Hi, Ken, one five four one. Um, hours operation, I was at meeting prior to this and we were talking about putting a warehouse with sixty docks. So my question is, will the operation be twenty-four by seven or will it be regular? Because this is a body of laws in this neighborhood. Do you guys have any answers for that?
Hold on, Joe, do you need it back? Hold on.
Um, there have been no, the, the special permit, uh, granted should, could put hours of operation. However, um, there have, there's been no discussion in terms of hours of operation. Uh, defer to the applicants to see if, but there are hours that, um, they're seeking.
Well, as an industrial park, we go along the strict road from Norton and for the tenants at one convenience. So we don't want to restrict basically with a town that says, we can't operate twenty-four seven. We'll lose tenants that way. But most often tenants usually run no more than two shifts. And the way that this park is situated and its location, it's down by the highway, closest to the highway where all the traffic and any sort of, uh, vehicles would be directed. And that's why it is ideally suited in that location.
I can definitely appreciate that. However, my biggest concern is the gain of noise and if you have sixty docks and four o'clock in the morning, I don't intend the warehouse distribution sales going to be. My biggest concern is at four a.m. in the morning, you've got sixty trucks loaded to go and all of a sudden you hear all these, um, truck and trailer starting up. I don't think the residents that bought that property, the residents on, on Ford Street would appreciate all that noise. So my concern is broadly to, uh, look at the hours operation. I understand what happens, but no one wants to promote that. However, there are citizens here in the town that deserves a piece of quiet, uh, the third shift hours.
Sir, what was your address again, please?
Five four one.
Five.
Five. And the other point too is construction of this project, um, may also coincide with the possibility of a big, big solar farm project to, that may be, that could possibly be included, but these two products may coincide during the construction. Last question, I apologize. On lot twenty-three, by all across the street, wrong retail, the empty boxes, that's a very dangerous road. Will there be two lanes on one side of the street and both sides of the street? Is that part of the project? Because it's a huge safety issue right now. Are you trying to, is it, is it boarding for that?
There are improvements being made through one twenty-three, but I think Mark is in a better position to give his specifics.
Um, regarding noise, I do have a, an exhibit that you can have. Didn't bring enough for everybody, everybody, everybody to probably share. Um, just what, what's that showing is the distance from buildings to the nearest residences. Um, building five, it's over, it's almost a thousand feet to the nearest house, um, significant distance, uh, to this neighborhood. Um, I think you see it's almost twenty-seven hundred feet to the houses up on, uh, Burt Street up here, up around. I feel there's significant buffer to, to those areas.
Sir, where are you looking at them?
Where are you looking at?
It's not, it's up here, because you're, 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 you're off of Burt. Yeah, so kind of like up here. Because this.
Well, I'm always, I'm a middle street. Noise travels everywhere, as we all know.
In perspective of that, in between, we have natural resources. It's an extensive, we can't go in there. Heavily treated, wetland conservation. We can't touch that.
My biggest concern is twenty-four by seven, that doesn't work.
As well as the way buildings four, five are situated, the docks are located, directed towards the highway. So it's on the backside of the building. There's probably more highway or less than a series.
So you're thinking of possibly that decision. I'm just.
And then regarding interchange, uh, the intersection at Leonard Street, uh, there will be a right turn only, uh, lane into Leonard and then there'll be a, a straight through with a traffic.
All right, thank you. That was just my concern hours operations. Consider that. And just to clarify, I'm sorry, is it, are you on Fuller or Burt? Burt Street.
Fuller.
Fuller, Fuller, okay. Got it. Thank you.
I think you see it's almost twenty-seven hundred feet to the houses up on Burt Street up here, up around. I feel there's significant buffer to those areas.
Sir, where are you looking on the?
Where are you looking at?
It's not, it's up here, because you're off, you're off of Burt. Yeah, so kind of like up here. Because this.
Well, I'm always, I'm a middle street. Noise travels everywhere, as we all know.
Respective of that, in between, we have natural resources, it's an extensive, we can't go in there. Heavily treated, wetland conservation. We can't touch that.
I'm just concerned is twenty-four by seven, that doesn't work.
As well as the way buildings four or five are situated, the docks are located, directed towards the highway. So it's on the backside of the building. There's probably more highway or less than a city.
So sir, don't take it in the wrong decision. I'm just asking.
And then regarding interchange, the intersection at Leonard Street, there will be a right turn only lane into Leonard, and then there'll be a straight through with a traffic.
All right, thank you, that was just my concern, hours of operations. Consider that.
And just to clarify, I'm sorry, is it, are you on Fuller or Burt? Burt Street?
Fuller, I mean.
Fuller.
Fuller, okay. Got it, thank you.
Process wise, I know you wanted to make a motion, we need to close the hearing, but before we do that, if you'd indulge me, let me just ask the applicant, you're still not done with conservation. And I really want to compartmentalize what we've accomplished and whatever is still open, at least be aware of what's still open. What risks do you assume if this is approved tonight and conservation? What action can the conservation commission take affecting your project such that your approval here, if that happens, would be in jeopardy? Do you understand what I'm trying to get to? I mean, you're assuming the risk if we go forward with this and conservation has major issues that somehow change this dramatically.
If it's a significant change, enough change, that couldn't be a minor modification, I, apparently we have to reopen a hearing and come back.
Well, Ken, if it's a minor modification, we can do that without starting this process all over. If it's a major modification, then the process starts all over. So again, just so we're all on the same page in terms of will going forward, are you comfortable taking that risk? And again, I have no way of knowing how the board's going to vote, you've sat in as many meetings as I have. Are you comfortable closing this and acting out? Or do you think it best that we wait until the next meeting?
First, if it's contingent, the way we discussed, on conservation approval, and then has the ability for minor modifications, then yes, we would be.
You would be what? I'm sorry.
Comfortable with closing the public hearing.
Okay, but here again, if conservation requires whatever of you that would require changes to the plan, most notably building five, and that's a significant change such that you may have to do something else. I'm trying to, again, I think we're all comfortable, I think the majority of us are comfortable feeling that we have heard all that we need to hear, other than what conservation, I'm speaking for myself, and if I'm wrong, speak up, other than what conservation may ultimately decide. From a process standpoint, I think it makes more sense to continue this with the expectation that you'll be done with conservation. Conservation had acted last night, I think we act today. I don't, since it's your application of risk, I don't have a preference one way or the other, although I do want to get to closure on this. So I'm asking you, what would you give preference to? Not, not entirely, it was process.
Process wise, so I guess, based on all that, and knowing that what we'd have to go through is a material change, then I would suggest that we will go ahead and continue to the twenty-sixth, after the previous applicant. So we'll have to continue to the twenty-sixth.
Okay, you refer to preference and again, I'll.
I'll make a motion to continue on the most.
I'd wait for motion.
Oh, you, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Turn it, you want to turn it on, Steve.
I'll make a motion to continue special permit four seventy-nine to twenty-sixth.
Second.
Been a motion and, I'm sorry, a second.
Only second.
Discussion.
And is there discussion?
I guess, I'm not sure if this is, we haven't really talked about conditions for approval. I'm not sure if it's that something, conditions of approval and/or waivers that we're granting. I'm not sure if it makes sense to spell those out now while the applicant is here and everybody's here, and there's nothing else on the agenda behind us, other than approving minutes, to, that leaves to run through those and discuss any of them, so that when we act on this at the next meeting, then it's much more, because it's not the first time I'm talking about them. Does that cover your thoughts, Tim?
If the chair recalls, you did mention this earlier, that we'd expect them to provide a list of any waivers, nuances, or limitations on the objectives of the planning board. And I think that's important to provide down to us by this part of the open hearing process. So if they're requesting a waiver or a modification or a waiver of the objections we have, the public has a chance to see them and address them and call them out. But doing that without giving the, us and the public, the opportunity of knowing what it is they're asking for, understanding that a special permit starts off with us basically making a determination that everything's been complied with, without waivers. And I don't think that's appropriate for this board to do without having, at least that scenario, and I suggest, I welcome the continuance, but I would request to have the applicants provide that kind of backup to the extent of anything, there's something by way of waivers or modifications or waivers or limitations of what the objects of this special permit are for. Call them out so that we can say, yes, and we understand that those are the, because I think our determination has to stay in the way of that determination. And I think in absence of something like that, I don't think we're able to do that.
Discussion.
There's been a motion to continue with a second, and we are discussing, so that's what we're doing in terms of motion.
Prime Minister, I'll make a motion. Tonight at least, I just want to make, it's imperative for the conservation committee that they have twelve days to go into meeting on twenty-fifth, and they had as much as time as we've had to review and ask questions and receive answers. So I do hope that conservation, they need the day before we're meeting, come to a conclusion. So I do ask that this be put in notes, and that confirmation note, they have responsibility to the next twelve days.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, there's been some discussion. Just add to the discussion, the question had been, in fact, I asked that we get a list of waivers. Those do not necessarily, being requested, those do not necessarily have to be part of the public hearing. However, without a public hearing, we can just deny all those waivers since there's no, no hearing. And I think there's been a motion and a second, I don't know if there's any further discussion. Motion is to continue to the twenty-sixth. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to continue to the twenty-sixth, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. It's continued to the twenty-sixth. Time and place to be, has to get determined. On your, your second special permit for you, one building seven, I assume that part of the same concern, i.e. conservation commission action, is still unclear.
Correct, the status of building seven is essentially the same. We resubmitted a full set of documents on the fourth, which was one week prior to their hearing. Again, no formal response from either the agent or, or his client on that submittal. Again, that was a, that was a second peer review, but varied minor items. So we're confident the site plan should be approvable as is, but the conservation approval. So essentially, if the board has any more questions, though, we'll have to answer any questions of those, but I think we'll request the same continuance. And we'll take the questions first, yeah.
Just to clarify, for this specific building and special permit, is that also on the agenda for downtown for the twenty-fifth, just to confirm?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to continue special permit forty-one?
So moved, second.
There's been a motion by both, second Stephen and Stephen.
Thank you.
To continue to the twenty-sixth, I assume?
Correct, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of continues to the twenty-sixth for special permit forty-one. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opfer elects to the twenty-sixth. Any waivers?
We will get everything in on an itemized list to recap all the meetings that we've been doing. So you'll have everything that we've agreed to beyond just the requested items, waivers.
Because you've gotten, like, you went to ZVA already, Jeff, so you've gotten approval for that, so that would be a waiver that we wouldn't be granting, because that's already been approved.
Correct.
So, okay, that's great.
None of the things like directional flow of traffic, which we've agreed to, isn't going to come up anywhere. That's something that we would be.
Okay.
And if possible, you know, within, you know, a week prior, if you can, you know.
Yeah.
We'll try for the end of the week, and now you're getting Monday, Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Smoke blood shut, so that's a good thing. So we have minutes for, we have the dates, December fifth and.
March fifth and February twenty-eighth.
Phil Strange, please, into the microphone, but just to have corrections, so the minutes of the fifth. On page two, just wanted to check the spellings of the superintendent and Bernie and Philz.
Of his name or the words?
His last name.
Okay, I was like.
And Bernie and Philz is missing a letter.
Was that an E, right?
It's E A T. Okay, so it's, hold on one second, I just want to spell it right. It's B, isn't it B A?
A T A.
Okay, and what was the other thing?
Bernie and Philz, three words way down on that page.
Yep.
I E.
I forgot the E. I did, I previewed.
And then on the third page, on the under the internal business, I feel we need to specify out what the policy on submittals was in a slightly more detail. Just terms of the policy on submittals to the board coming a week in advance, the intent of meeting.
I can put the actual policy there, you guys approve.
Sure, yeah, just the policy on submittals didn't really tell me what it was, if I was taking it.
No worries.
Same set of minutes, in the Bernie and Philz special permit section, just a, and maybe this is correct I stated, so just to clarify, it's listing it as continued public hearing? That was the first opening of that hearing, so it wouldn't have been continued, correct? And then?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
So straight continued, we did adjust it in the minutes, and we continued it, but at that point it was not even continued.
I used the template, I used a template.
No, that's fine, that was my collection, so I just wanted to make sure. So if we can have that changed as well.
Yep, we got it.
Okay, I assume that the minutes as presented for February twenty-eighth are acceptable, and if so, there's a motion to approve. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will abstain since I'm an applicant, or wasn't an applicant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain if the minutes could reflect that, Chris. And as corrected, is there a motion for the minutes of March fifth?
I believe the prospect of moving back, the school had requested a hundred fifty feet. I had proposed that they move back at least a hundred feet, suggested that they might want to consider removing the neck of panels, and they indicated they could make that, that was something they could consider, but they didn't want to commit themselves, and they were going to review it and get back to us. I'd like to leave those items open, so we can get back to them on those two requests.
What? Is that an addition, Orin, or do you see something that?
That's an addition. That was specifically, I raised that, and I believe one was a hundred percent back, at least a hundred percent back, and then alternatively asked why they couldn't do away with the net, I'll call it the net, the area that was closest to the school that it was standing, and they wanted that new panels in it, and asked that they would consider removing all the panels from that area. And he said that he couldn't, they would consider that, but he wouldn't comment, he had to check with owners. And I get back, get back to them on that.
So do you have a recommendation of how you would like that worded?
Sure, the applicant was, was asked whether they could agree to set back panels at least a hundred feet from the, from the property line, as requested by the school committee, and didn't. And alternatively, asked whether they would consider removing the panels located in the narrow portion of the lot immediately just to the school. The applicant indicated he couldn't commit to it, but would check with the owner and get back to us.
I think there's already been a motion and a second, is that correct?
We voted.
No, that was on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that's what.
There's been, there's been no motion on the twenty-eighth.
There's been no motion on the fifth?
There's been no motion on the fifth, I'm just asking, I've asked for corrections.
As to the portion of the notes relative to Bernie and Philz, I have some few, and I hope you'll come to us.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the fifth as amended.
Or a second?
Sure, a second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just to confirm, do you have the language of that change written out?
Yep, and they all wrote it too.
Okay, would you want to be able to just recap that, as to how it will be stated in the minutes?
Yep, so the applicant, they asked the applicant if they could change the setback of the panels from a hundred feet, to a hundred feet from the property line. The school requested that, and the applicant said that they would check back and get back to us with that.
And there was also, and also to consider removing the section of panels closest to the school.
The narrow part of their lot, the narrow part of their lot.
It is already called out, watch the videos, I think that helps a lot with the descriptive aspects that you're talking about as well, so.
Yeah, probably, but that's, I'd like to see them.
Paul, has it written down to yourself, to the two of us?
Okay, so again, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstained as to the second, as to the minutes as to Bernie and Philz, but approved us the rest.
So how do I, should I just put him as abstaining?
Yeah, you just have to abstain.
I think you're better off abstaining on top. Okay, in fact, the only motion that's in order, Ken, did you want to give us a little recap of what Village Center meeting, was it Monday night?
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tomorrow.
Goodnight, I thought I was sorry, Monday night. Oh, I'm sorry.
I could just address a board or something.
I thought you were just here for entertainment purposes. Chris, either turn that on or.
There's been some statements of Phil, no? How about I speak loud enough?
Why'd you say? It's all in the audience at home, Chris, so I'll let you use this mic.
So there's been some statements in tonight's meeting and in the previous meetings about the class street noise. I am the town's enforcement officer. The town does not have any noise ordinance, but we did go out there four times within the last ten months. I've been out there, I've met the owner, probably, I've met the people that are leasing it. I've been out there spring, summer, fall, and this winter. I've been out there at several different points, day and night, to observe the facility, once with the town planner as well, to observe noise levels, to ensure that the people aren't, you know, living under severe conditions. To me, it was only available within fifty yards. But again, everybody has different conditions. We walked the swamp between. We walked the swamp between the properties of 14 Clap and between the, in Vertus, and we found nothing. So we stood in front of her property, we stood behind her property, we stood in the area between the property. Nothing was audible from that field, so, you know, she said, "We don't know enforcement, we've been out there four times," and I just wanted the board to know that, we're not ignoring the people of the town, no.
Chris, that was 50 yards, not 50 feet, correct?
50 yards, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's helpful.
What kind of, what kind of enforcement mechanism can the town bring upon somebody if there was a problem?
Again, the town has no zoning ordinance, so it cannot enforce, but the health officer does have, there's laws within the health code that the health officer can enforce, so that's something that we could look at. But I have been out there and we haven't found anything.
And just to, you know, recap what they called out earlier this evening, it wasn't as much the noise level as the frequency, and that's, that seems to be the, the point with clatter of streams, so.
I can't comment on that, sir.
Yeah, right, right, I mean, yeah, and you may be absolutely correct with the noise levels, but there's this component of the frequency that is, is, seems to be more the concern. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else for tonight? My mistake, meeting is tomorrow night, towards Village Center, so.
It's going to be great.
6:30 FPL, Joe.
Thank you, sorry. In any case, any other items to come up tonight? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you and goodnight.